All right, 6 o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order if we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary Kay, roll call, please.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
Angie Schreiber?
Here.
J.D. Schrader?
Here.
Dr. Julie Sprague?
Here.
All right, is there anybody, no sign up for public comment? Okay, we are going to pick up the two policies that was referred back to the committee from the last board meeting, Policy 3130, Assignment Transfer Revision. What were... What were the proposed changes, Julie, that we were gonna look at?
When it went to the full board, I was directed, it wasn't voted on, as you recall, instead, it was decided to come back to the policy committee and that I should write a revision that allows for interested board members to be considered as observers of the process for all administrative hires. So I added similar language to the next policy as well.
Okay, so your suggested revision is what we're looking at that's in the green, in the green there. All right, is there any questions on that suggested revision? Any changes that we want to pursue?
Um, I need a minute to look it over.
Okay.
Do we have the original of what we suggested in the first place? Is that printed out for us, or?
That's what I'm looking for.
I think you saw it in the packet. The, here.
The suggested change?
What you had changed?
Yeah.
I got your suggestion, it is what's in the packet, what was presented to the board?
This is what was presented to the board, I think that too.
Was that in the packet?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, I may not be sorry.
Okay, so which one are we looking at? Cause I have...
Okay, we're looking at this right here.
This one.
And this is what was presented to the board, that the board asked to send it back to committee, and the board also asked Julie for a possible revision from what is written there, and that's where we are tonight. So what's on the table for discussion is, do we have what we have from the board meeting, which is there in your hand, and then what Julie has presented from administration for a suggested revision?
You need to see this.
I got it. Or, I remember...
You remember the other one?
I remember, well, the other one was just, we would sort of, the president would assign people to be the committee.
Right, so all of that was removed, and it indicates that board members who are interested...
And Julie and I actually talked about this after that meeting, for this revision.
Can be, right, observers and...
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds reasonable to me.
Well, the problem with being an observer is that we wouldn't have the information, like the background information, anything like that, from the people that were applying. You would just basically show up and see the interview, but you wouldn't know the qualifications.
You wanna see the resumes or something?
Yeah, I wanna see their qualifications.
But you would have that as the observer, you'd be part of that, that hiring process.
You could look at their materials during the interview, certainly.
Yeah, so during the interview process that...
You just said that we wouldn't, I just seated it and you agreed with me.
So when they first apply, you wouldn't have access to all of the applications?
Yeah, okay.
But if you're the observer and part of that process, you would, whether it's a packet or however, we would do it.
How do you distribute it? Do you give it to staff before the interviews, like the other committee members?
Usually to have time, right, to look them over. We usually meet ahead of time to develop the process and questions and all of that.
And would the board member be able to come to that part too?
If they wanted to, I don't see why not.
Which part are you talking about? Not the interview, but?
The pre, the pre-interview where they develop the question. So then if you had a particularly pressing question, maybe you could instead ask it.
Right, cause I was gonna, my next thing is, you know, as an observer, you wouldn't be allowed to ask any kind of questions or anything like that, so.
But that was all discussed at the full board.
Right, and I still take issue with it.
President Pyatt, is it okay if I sit up here as invited?
You may, yeah. We have allowed other board members to sit at the table, too.
Dr. Deet talked plenty.
Yeah.
Says you were nice enough to come.
I shared in the board meeting, which is why I felt it was important to come tonight, that I thought it was an opportunity to build, and it felt like a lot of finger pointing in the full board discussion. So my feedback is, as a board member, to have no involvement or knowledge prior to the recommendation coming to the board is a struggle because you have to back your decision, and it feels like a blind decision. So this, this allows the opportunity for board members to participate, and I would define that as from potentially the committee, the administrative committee in reviewing applicants, to indirect participation as an observer. But I do think more information or involvement from the board is beneficial because in our most recent hire, not that I would disagree with the recommendation to the board, but there was no information shared of number of applicants or qualifications, you know what I mean?
It was in the board packet.
Prior to it coming to the board, though.
Right.
So I feel that's a disconnect and a way to increase transparency and trust also. So this seems like it offers a compromise where there's an opportunity...
J.D., are you, would you be suggesting that where the verbiage, the language is, if any board members are interested in observing the interviews without participating, to strike the observing with the interviews without participating, and have the district administrator shall, the district administrator shall ask if any board members are interested in being a part of the interviewing process?
I think it is.
Is that what?
I wasn't going that far. I was saying during the, cause I don't, I don't want us to ever get in a situation where, you know, we say something that's protected. You know, if we ask any legal interviewer question or something, I don't want the board to do that. So necessarily participating in the interview might not be great, but if you have a pre-meeting beforehand and you already got to see the stuff, then you could say, well, I'd really be interested if someone would ask this question. You know, so you'd be participating in that, and then you'd get to hear the answer, and then maybe they'd ask that same question to all the candidates?
Sure.
More so than, you know, more so than just actually participating in the, more controlled like we did during the superintendent search.
Right, and we do, we already have it set where there, there will not be a quorum of the board present, because that would not be, that would not be good, either a negative quorum or a four-member quorum, or five-member quorum. So we would only have three board members who would be participating at any given time. The only caveat here, and Julie, I think this is where we probably should go, is if, if you have various meetings of interviewed people, those same three or two or one board member needs to be sure that their schedule will allow them to be at all, because it wouldn't be fair for them to come to Mary Kay's interview and not come to my interview, you know what I'm saying? Cause the whole team comes to all of those interviews, correct?
Yes.
So if, if there are three days of interviews, then those board members need to be present for all three of those days of the interviews.
It's hard for me to envision myself ever managing to have enough time to go to an interview.
I'm not necessarily as interested in being a part of, I'm only speaking for myself, being a part of the actual interview, I'm more interested in just some more communication leading up to. And then I feel like we are able to back the recommendation once it is brought to us because we just have the basic information regarding the applicants, their, their job history, their qualifications, and then I would trust you and your team with the interview process.
Yeah, and that's how we've always done it, even prior to my arrival, is the board doesn't see the recommended candidate until you're asked for approval. So Dave thanked me, I don't know if you guys thought about it, but that's why we had Katie come in that night, it was like an opportunity for her to meet everyone, but some of the conversation wasn't appropriate, and it was in public session, so I, you know, my heart was racing, not knowing what to do about that. So I do wish there were more trust that we're only going to bring you a candidate that, you know, you could support. But if we go to this observer piece, that is what we were trying to do, was offer a compromise based on what other districts do.
I, I really think it helps support you and your staff, because there's a disconnect otherwise, it's not a mistrust so much as it is, and I know finance is not in this specific policy, but there are important positions that the community is aware of, and as taxpayers, you know, we, we are accountable all the way around, and so I feel it provides us more information and a better understanding of what led to the recommendation. Again, not necessarily being an active observer of the interviews, but a well-informed along the way, and we, we can back the recommendation that gets brought to the board.
So you're asking for less than this, but also a little more? Like you just want more info upfront, but you don't wanna sit in on the interview?
Well, you don't have to.
Right, 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 right. But you're saying?
I'm speaking for myself, I, I do not feel I need to be a part of the interview process, no. I do feel that the background information on the applicants is important, like, again, it's not a trust mistrust, it is an accountability as a whole. So I, yes.
So, but do you want all the ones, or just like the top three, or just the ones they're gonna interview? So you're saying you would want that email to you or something, even if you weren't gonna go to the interview?
Yes.
And I don't know the HR rules at all on, I mean, if you apply to a job, is that fine-ish? Or do we have to, it's not a secret if they, could someone open records request?
It's confidential.
Or do they open a records request, all the applicants?
Well, can you redact the applicant's name?
Well, and also talking with Dean about other things, let me, let me just say what I talked to him about was student expulsion hearings, and he and I were sharing things, what information comes out to the board prior to. He is of the opinion that the board should receive all the information of the named student prior to the meeting, not like what we do, we wait until they get here. And whenever he said that to me, I came back to him and I said, well, what about the confidential nature? And he said, as a board member, if you're not confidential, then there's a problem there. So I get it that it is confidential, but I also get that as board members, we should keep that confidential information, you know, so if five candidates come in and apply for one position, and we're only gonna interview three of those five, the world, nobody needs to know who those other two candidates potentially could have been. Number one, it could harm their job where they are, if they're currently working somewhere. Does that all make sense?
With an expulsion, though, you are intimately involved, I mean, that is your...
Yeah, yeah.
So I would say...
But what I'm saying is, the confidential part is, is where I'm a little bit taking issue, because regardless, whatever comes to this board, it needs to be kept confidential when, when necessary. And that's just the way our attorney feels about it, too. Now, he, he's not saying change what we're doing for student expulsions because it's what we're doing, but that was just his, his thoughts behind that as well.
So what if we had to say, the district administrator will inform board members of pre-interviews and interview times, days and, dates and times? And ask if any board members are interested in participating in the pre-interview process and observing the interviews?
When I say interview process or interviews, it is, I mean, it is a process, so...
So when you say interviews, it's the whole, the whole thing?
Yeah.
I think language is important, and I can understand that, I would simply make, offer the thought of adding observing in the interview process without participate, direct participation, without participating.
And observing the interview process without?
Yeah.
Okay, so how does that go to the point of seeing the material?
And asking the questions that you have.
I think, I think from the board mayor's perspective, if we have a question, we should direct our questions to Julie.
Well, which we would in the pre-interview process.
Right.
But unless we call that out specifically.
Right, as J.D. has pointed out, and Jill, language is important.
Yep.
And if we add that verbiage in there, that questions from board members need to be directed through the district administrator.
You know, I have wondered if there could just be a protocol as opposed to a policy.
You mean unwritten or more informed?
No, more, more, like just a formal protocol within a...
Well, policy is, would be the protocol.
Yeah, it's not the word I want.
Policies fluid, I mean, they can change, and they should change, you know, with time.
It's a different word I want. But just outlining, like...
Like a guideline?
The time, the timeline, you know, the job position has been posted, it will be closing or it's been closed, we've had X number of applicants, here's, here's their, their applications, personal information has been redacted, if you would like to participate as an observer in the interview process, reach out to the district administrator. You know, like that provides the opportu, you know, that, that basic information is there, you, you and your, your staff would still have the, the power to identify who you feel is best to, to interview. It gives board members the opportunity to participate in listening and observing in the interview process, but I just feel like it gives the board the background to further validate and support your recommendation once you bring it to the full board.
So in addition to adding the word process, then, for these administrative positions, you would like me to share the redacted information as we go through it? So like, we're posting business services, and then we're planning on interviewing, so that's what you're suggesting?
Yeah, just...
And I could do that through email?
Yeah.
And then give a deadline for when board members can respond and say, you know, I wanna be a participant in this? Because I, I think you're gonna find, like J.D., I don't have time, I mean, you know my schedule, a lot is just, is crazy. Mary Kay learned a little bit of it. J.D.'s probably got more time than everybody else does, you know? Right, especially now, all right? I, I think you'll find that there will be little to no board members that will jump on it and say, yeah, I'll be a part of, but you're given the opportunity.
And we're hoping that we don't have the opportunity for a long time.
Right.
Well, I mean, like, if we didn't have a clue who was coming for, by our manager.
But again, that's been the past practice for decades.
Right, which is why we need to correct it.
That wasn't unusual.
Which is why we need to correct it.
So read again, how, what we're gonna propose sent to the board on the 28th? What is, what is this gonna look like?
So this first one, Mary Kay, see if this works, so...
What I'm learning about this is we should do a screen share or something. We're gonna actually physically write policies like this, we should broadcast it on the screen so we can all see the document, and then...
Yeah.
That's not a bad idea.
Not that we, not that we have to accomplish that right to second.
Admin positions become vacant, and then they're listed in the two policies.
Right.
The district administrator shall ask if any board members are interested in observing the interview process without participating. The number of board members observing interviews must not, or interview process must not constitute a quorum of the full board.
Do we want a sentence in there reflecting Jill's thought?
Which one?
Yes.
I'm just saying, and the district administrator will provide the board the redacted...
Resumes.
Resumes prior to the interview.
The start of the process.
Yes.
You know, and if you wanna create a list of questions that, like, are off limits, like kind of what you can say and what you can't say, and stuff, that might be helpful, too, to kind of give some kind of like guidance.
Well, the, the board members would not be asking the questions.
No, but in the pre-interview, we would be talking to them, and then...
To, to, just to Julie, that's who we would talk to.
Right, but that would save us time.
But I mean, if you had, I don't know how long an interview is, like, do you try to standardize it at a certain?
It depends, anything over an hour is not necessarily productive. If we need more time, we wouldn't ask for a second interview typically.
Yeah, I do remember going through the administrator process, and there were some questions that rose to the top that the firm that we were using said, you cannot ask those questions.
I just, I think that would be helpful.
And they were a lot of personal questions, you know, like, where do you live, and those kinds of things, you can't ask those questions, because you don't have to live within the district to serve in the district.
Right.
And I assume you probably can't ask people questions about their religion, or their...
Or their family, you can't ask them if they're married, you know, what their views and beliefs are, you cannot do that. You can only ask what, things that are pertaining to the job.
Yeah.
There wasn't too many far out questions, but I remember there was a few that rose up.
So I see that in your revision, you have activities director versus the original head athletic director, what's the difference?
Activities, Tom oversees like the forensics club, which is not athletic.
Okay, so same position, just more in...
Yeah, he, he covers all of that, not just athletics.
Okay, what's his title?
Activities director.
Okay.
So the sentence that we're adding, is that gonna be to the end, Julie, or is it in the middle there?
I think it would be in the middle.
I think it would be better served in the middle.
Is there anything that is gonna state that board members are to be informed of dates and times of the interview?
I think that would be within, if interested in observing the interview process.
The last sentence, I think ought to be that number of board members observing the interview process must not constitute a quorum of the full board. So the question, the, the statement that you want to put in would be right before that.
Right, okay.
And Mary Kay, what is that one sentence that we're adding in there?
District administrator will provide redacted application information to the board prior to...
The interview process, beginning.
Prior to the interview process?
Comma, along with the date and times of the interviews?
Exactly.
You wouldn't know it?
Yeah.
And that would be part of the process, though?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The only, the last thing I would like to offer is, when, when you get this typed up, let's send it to Dean and get his opinion, let him opine on it, and if he's okay with it, then we'll see what he, if he's not, he'll put his opinion in there.
Do you want this for Monday's meeting? He won't have time over the holiday.
Probably not, but we do have the second reading, and then during the second reading, we could bring Dean's opinion, which, which is fine.
Okay. Do you want the questions from board members directed to the district administrator? Do you want that included in there, too?
You know, I really think we, the language is very important, and for you and for your protection, I think we need to have that, that the, the board members, of course, it does say that they are participating, but just so that a way, we don't have some disagreements right in front of the interviewee and other persons that are on there with that sentence that, any questions the board members have directs their questions to the district administrator.
How do you feel about that, Julie? Do you feel comfortable with?
I do, I think we could add that to every policy, you know, it's kind of like, and the connection to all of the employees, so...
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's not a bad thought. If, if that's, if we're gonna add it to this, why not just add that into the other policy as we're going through? That verbiage, that questions that board members have, direct them to you. In other words, if, if somebody has a, you know, cause...
I disagree with that.
Has a question about hiring a, whichever position, then they might have something to say, Julie, are you gonna ask this question, X, Y, Z?
So just in, in regards to the hiring process, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, because Julie just mentioned that those questions generally would come to her for all positions. I mean, down, are you saying even down to support staff? If, if there's something that, you know, board member might have an idea that...
I was actually thinking about the generality, like, if a board member wanted to know about something district-wide, the question would generally come to me?
Yeah.
So, but I guess that's an assumption, you know?
Could it, would it be appropriate, though, at times, I'm thinking, to contact a building administrator first?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I know, I was just trying to think of, cause when you said that, I was like, well, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So do you sit in on the interview process for all levels of staff, even support?
You don't only end...
Okay.
Am I not okay for that?
Okay. That's what I was wondering, I was like, okay. All right.
It seems similar to the, when we requested, when the checks are written and just who is on that check run? Similar to that, and I don't know if you get a lot of questions on that or not, but that's kind of how I see it, not more...
And Tim's staff is very good about sending out questions, or, you know, we're gonna use your signature on X, Y, Z. They send it, I respond to them every time, so that way they know that I'm seeing their, their request. Okay, we good now, we're sending this to the board, 3130? Now, the first reading is what we're coming out of tonight, however, we do know that we'll send this to Dean, and if by chance he's excited and wants to send it back before the 28th, that's fine, but if not, there could be a revision for the second reading, and that's, that's fine.
So...
I'll post on Wednesday. Okay, okay.
If we make...
Okay.
If we make a revision at the second meeting, does the, does the process start all over again?
No, because we passed the first reading already.
Okay, and you're gonna find out from Dean, like, what his leave time is that he would like on?
Yes, for any future policy changes, you know, do you require a week, two weeks?
Yeah, I just don't wanna waste our time meeting as a committee?
Yep, yep.
And then have all of them come back from Dean's, well, hold off, I gotta check this, I gotta check that, you know?
Yep. Most of the time, he's very sharp, but two of them this time, he, he got a little tripped up on that he wants to do some more legal search. Letter B, Policy 3120, employment of professional staff revision. So this would be basically what you did for the first one, is what you're, is what we would do for this one.
Right.
So, the same language from the first one, so I, I think it would be in the best interest to use the same language that we added to the first one, to 3130, to add this to 3120.
Okay.
Is that good, J.D.? Yeah?
I'm part of the committee, so...
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. They will, we will, letter C, Policy 8800, the religious and patriotic ceremonies and observances, you can see what was proposed for changes. You can see what was proposed for changes, and then you can see the notes from Dean. Dean's ask is that we postpone, put this on another agenda because he wants to do some legal search. His first, his first thought was for this was great, go with it, but then whenever he really got and started looking at it, his word to me was, he's concerned about making students and staff stand for the pledge of allegiance. He says, though he agrees with that, he doesn't want us to become a test site for legal issues, and we could impose and infringe upon freedom of speech. He said, you do already, you already don't require everybody to recite the pledge or the national anthem, so making somebody stand could also impose upon freedom of speech as well. So he, he did ask that we move this to another meeting. Any questions on that?
I do, so.
Okay.
I worry that we are paying twice for policy work.
Right.
Neola, and then, like I didn't know all of these were going to Dean, so are we interested in not having Neola be our policy?
The purpose of.
Because they have that team of attorneys.
Exactly, the purpose of Dean also is, he's the one that represents the board if it goes to court, as well as Neola will be there too. So if we're there going to court on any policy issue, Neola will be there because it's their policies, but also Dean will be present as our school board attorney. So that's the purpose of going through Dean, also for him to see these changes and get his legal opinion on them as well.
Could we just send them Neola not to Dean?
We could.
It feels less personal, sort of, but I don't.
We could, what's.
Do they charge us, or do they?
Just the flat rate, so any updates we want to make, they make for us, but we're not charged additionally.
So what is the turnaround for Neola? Because we can utilize their service.
I haven't sent anything for revision to Neola. Just the grievance policy.
Yeah.
So what I've found with Neola after reading through all of.
I said that they're just to have it in production, because Dean does the update. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I've found, reading all of the policies and all of the administrative guidelines, is that they don't match, and they're often very, like extremely vague. So I think if Neola is able to update it with, you know, the criteria that we're looking for, then okay, but like, in certain instances, we want it to be specific, you know, and call things out, and, and they have it very, very vague. And like I said, the policy manual and the administrative manual don't match.
So when you, like I don't know how we're picking these policies, I, and I am disappointed because I thought when we went to committee structure, you had said you and I would be working on the policy committee. Well, I, I again had no idea these were coming, none. So, and I can, I guess, live with that, but like, I know that in state statute, you don't have to recite, but then federally, it's a peaceful protest to not stand, and I would have been happy to talk about that, and I just didn't know. And then the other thing that I was worried about is when kids, let's say the board does say stand, and when they don't, then what is your expectation?
Exactly.
Because we'd be suspending, and I don't know that that's what you intended, but it sounds like we don't have to worry about that today.
Exactly.
Yep.
Could you follow up with Dean, you make a good point about how Dean is the board's attorney, so maybe the first question going back to duplication of cost for the same service, legally, what is his feedback on our current process? Is it a benefit specific to his representation for the board? Should it go?
Should we be challenged?
Yeah.
Right.
Would he feel that Neola's services and legal consult would provide, what sort of, I don't know.
I don't know what Neola would do, if they, if we changed their policy, it seems unlikely that they would defend it, to me, you know, because it wouldn't be something they were standing behind.
Agreed, if it were.
If they just decided to, you know, something like this could go all the way to the Supreme Court, you could spend five hundred thousand dollars litigating, you know, some ridiculous amount of money if, you know, happened in school politics. Do you?
Yeah, they provide, that's a good point, the kind of blanket policies.
They'll defend their policy.
I don't know that vague is the right word, but they're maybe generic, so that they cover legally what has to be covered, but then if a local board is interested in something more specific, that would be on us, and you're right, if we chose to change it, that's where Neola's support would end them. I mean, they'll change it for us in, in the document, but they don't have to legally stand by it, of course.
Right, somebody at the time you're paying an attorney to figure out if it is legal, and that takes time, because you have to go read all those cases, and sometimes the cases are unclear, and then you.
It does help when I send him direct case rulings, though.
Yeah, did you do that?
Yes, I did.
So you're so dedicated, I'm so often impressed. The, so what actually, what do we do on this, right? So do we actually raise and lower the flag at every school, every day?
When it's, yeah.
I think the elementary schools, the students do it, don't they, at the elementary?
Yeah.
I mean, some of the.
Like, I know North does, but like it says in the policy that our building maintenance guys are supposed to do it.
Yeah.
Maintenance people. And, and another change that, I don't know if it was in this one, or, no, it's in the next one, but basically stating that all exterior flags should be all weather flags, because in our policy, it says that we don't have to display a flag if it's not an all weather flag during inclement weather, so. Sorry, I went through with the point two.
So are we, letter C, we're tabling?
Not tabling, postpone to the next meeting, because table means you pick it up later, you know?
I just want to mention on this one, that.
Which one, letter C?
The, um, the religious and patriotic ceremonies and observances, right? So on the third paragraph, distribution of any outside organization's materials, but then it doesn't tell you like what, like what to do with that, so that I added must submit a request to district administrator, because like you don't know what to do with it, if you're an outside organization, you have materials you want to just, just.
We have a process, now I want to see what this is talking about, Angie.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think it's a, do you think we're better served having the full board talk about a policy to see if enough of them agree before we pay Dean to figure out if it's legal? You know, are we really, you know, is it worth five hours of legal research, a thousand dollars, to make what I'm going to call minor changes? You know, to figure out that they're legal before we even approve it?
Well, your definition of minor changes and my definition of minor changes is two different things.
So you're calling it, you would call this a major change?
Any change to a policy, in my opinion, is a major change, because it's policy, you've got to live within that, correct?
Yes.
So, you know, if, if you change a little small part of the, of the policy, that's major, because it affects the entire district.
Okay, but you're just sort of saying, but if we pay a thousand dollars to get this policy legalized, but then the board says, we don't want to do it, is that a good use of our money?
Well, I think.
Well, in the past, our policy committees were, if I recall, whenever I was a community member, the policy committee would meet, and they're the ones that went through the policies, and then brought their recommendations of changes to the board at that point. And prior to Neola, the policies were, were pretty vague in a lot of areas. I mean, I went through and printed them all out, and I had several three-inch binders of all the policies that were, a lot were outdated. So when we went to Neola, you were part of that process, whenever we changed to Neola, there was a lot, it, whenever they sent us the finance side of it, Tim went through it and his, and his staff, and then it was brought to us, and then we had choices in there, if you recall, we can accept this part, and say no to this, and yes to this. And that's where some of the policies could go back to Neola, because they may have that verbiage already in there that we said no to in the beginning, but it might already be there.
What I'm just saying is, right, I have no problem with that, but should we go to the full board and say, hey, we like this idea, send it to Dean for approval, before we get perfect language ironed out?
That's what I think we're supposed.
That's what the committees are for.
I know, but the committee might, the board might not agree with the committee, right? So then we.
Well, we had that same issue in the past, I mean, that's what a, the, I mean, if we want the board to look at policies, then we don't need a policy committee unless the board, you know, if, if Jill, you, or Angie, or I want to change a policy for a particular reason, then you just bring it to the whole board.
I'm hearing you JD, and that makes sense, like are we being fiscally responsible, really is what you're, you're wondering.
We could spend ten thousand dollars on this meeting alone.
And the flip side is, we could probably argue that for any, or that same argument could be applied to any board action, right? Because our administrative team puts time into preparing and, you know, whatever, and bringing it to us, so we're paying their salaries to do that, and then.
Right, but their salary, right, and the lawyer is directly something two or three hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of, you know, and we have some, something in our legal budget, what is it, Tim? Twenty or thirty thousand dollars, and I don't know how much we use of that, so in that case, we might as well spend it, I guess it's in the budget, but.
We looked that up, we've really increased, I mean.
So let me ask you this JD.
I don't have it right now either, but yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, I, I hear you.
I'm, yeah, I'm not even saying I'm opposed, or, you know.
Yeah.
Just the merits of the policy at all, I'd just rather have the board agree before we pay.
You know, JD, another thought that I'm just thinking, spitballing here, is if any board member, any one of us board members has a policy change that we want to do, rather than coming to this committee first, why don't we go to Julie first, as board members? And then let Julie put it through the, her administration ringer, so to speak, and then from her decision, it would come and say, yes, we need to change this policy, do this. So a lot of these, as you know, Angie went through and, and done a lot of these policies, so why don't we going forward is if a board member, I don't know if you, if you agree with this, if a board member wants to change anything in any policy, why don't that board member just set a meeting up with Julie and say, here's what I think, this is what's going through my mind, and you can, you know, look and do some study and research and, and change things accordingly? And then that board member and you can communicate back and forth, what are your thoughts?
What happens if, if it's something that the administration, not just you, but like the administration team says, no, we don't want to change it, we like how things are?
I get that too.
Because they're, you know.
I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate to direct it to you as a policy committee chair?
Mm-hmm.
And then going back to the communication, Julie, that you didn't feel you had with the agenda items, it would be discussed.
Yeah.
First, to even bring it to the agenda, and then in that discussion would be, yep, I do think, or we think it would be beneficial to seek Dean's input to bring it to the committee. That way you're increasing your communication, but it seems like, we have committees, so it seems like if somebody wants to bring something to, as an agenda item, that should go to the committee chair.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, that's, you knew that.
Yeah, and that's why I failed Julie by not bringing this prior to, tonight, to her, and I will admit that.
Call them out for you.
Yeah.
I mean, in the board's defense, the full board is invited to this, and they do get, all get to the agenda. So if they were, had questions or disagreements or anything like that, they could come here, versus striking out the full board meetings even longer.
But I'm wondering if, if that discussion occurs between the, the policy chair and Dr. Sprague, you two would be able to likely feel confident to say, we should seek Dean's feedback on this, or these are the proposed changes, we feel confident sending those proposed changes to, or discussing at the committee to bring to the board, right? Like if, is that what you're getting at, like?
Mm-hmm.
You two could probably make a well-informed decision based off your conversations with Dean, your experience with policy, to know whether or not this one is one that we may want to seek his legal advice ahead versus, it's, I don't want to use the word minor, but it's a change of verbiage or something, or an addition that clarifies, or something where you don't feel a need to, to pay legal, legal fees to verify it first, I don't know if I'm making sense.
You are, I don't know how often we could do that without consulting Dean.
Exactly.
Just because, again, Neola, everything is, to listen to Tim Bannock talk, you know, their team of attorneys just scours these, so by the time they come to us, they know they've been properly vetted, so that we're covered. So if we would want to make, again, a local change, I think we would have to consult Dean most likely, but.
Well, we could send it to both, we could send it to both Neola and Dean, and kind of compare the responses that we get. If Neola responds with more details backing up, you know, what we're saying, or they have their verbiage, then we communicate that to Dean as well.
And Neola's not an additional charge?
Right.
Because it's a, it's a fee, correct?
Right, but I don't know that they would do additional legal work, like I go to the kids must stand, I know where Neola's, based on that federal.
Right.
Case law I showed you. So if we were to ask them, though, to do additional legal research, I can't guarantee there wouldn't be a charge, because they've already made their case, you know what I mean?
Right.
But at the very beginning, was, was there a choice between must, shall, may?
In cases have come forward in the courts that have changed, you know, the, you know, there's a criteria that's not, what's the word I'm looking for that they said?
For an approved?
Sort of, what's the word I'm looking for?
Or, I mean, the precedent or whatever?
Yeah.
But, because, I mean, were you in the Seventh Circuit, or was it the US Supreme Court, or, you know, was it the?
Yeah, like they've, there's been multiple cases that have gone through, you know, on different, different levels, and I, when I studied, I studied all the high courts, but, so I mean, thing, you know, they've been challenged at other schools, and so they might have changed.
Can we just talk about the very first?
That's a good point, when there's a legal update, like a course, or a case that changes a legal opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Neola, that's when we give the update.
Right.
Yeah, that's automatically done.
So right, like on the second page there, in accordance with the US flag, or the US flag code requirements, the flag of the United States shall be raised, and you changed it to must, so practically, what is the difference?
Dean indicated there is.
Shall and must is the same.
So what do we, and I think the same thing with professional staff members versus principals, teachers, and other staff, like what do we gain by changing that?
Okay, so that's very interesting, going to shall versus must, because in the school day policy, eighty-two twenty-nine, we're not there yet, but going to shall or must, must is circled, and state, he shared must or shall, and I believe, one of these I was just looking for, his, Dean's feedback was, shall implies must.
Yeah.
So that's very intriguing to me, because.
It's in the back part of it, put together, the second section of it, no, all the way, go all the way through.
That's with all the hand, like little hand notes written on it.
Wait a minute.
The next paper clip.
So JD, I don't know if shall in your.
Those ones.
It depends on, it depends on the usage in the sentence.
See, that's what's.
It shall be done, you know, it's like, that sounds like must to me, but I, you know, and I feel.
Well, I go back to it's best practice, best practice doesn't mean must, best practice means this is what we're saying is best practice, it doesn't mean it has to happen, you know, so that's where language is super important to me, when it says shall, it becomes a gray area, and Danny, that's where Dean's feedback to me was confusing, because in one area, shall is implied as must, and in another area, it's shall or must, question mark, I think.
Right, and so in that case, it depends on the context of the sentence, right?
Right, so must, there's no context to be taken into.
Right.
Yeah, so the legal.
I think Neola, just to be consistent, does stay with shall. And then you don't have.
It seems like they do, yeah.
One or the other dependent policy, they like to have it, like when they change superintendent to. Like, when they change superintendent to district administrator, if they change.
Went across the board.
All the way through, yeah, so that you didn't have both.
So I did do some research in regards to that, and actually, the, the legal profession prefers the word must because, again, you don't have to take the context of the sentence and what, everything, it's, it's more direct. There's no misunderstandings, so. Shall can be taken out of con, you know, the context can change, and then there, and that could be why Neola likes to use it because they, it's gray, it leaves, it defines gray area.
I said this earlier, and I, language is important, so that becomes very intriguing to me because if it's depending upon the context of the sentence in the policy, then you're consulting legal counsel anyway because our interpretation of how shall or shall would be in the context of that, we would still need legal representation to validate, is it, is it, it's very subjective.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Would you pay your own dollars out of your pocket to figure out the answer to this question?
I think that, um, language is very important, and if it is your child or your child, you know, you're making a decision, a vote that impacts a child's future, you would want to feel very confident on if this policy is shall giving you flexibility or must giving you no flexibility. So I find that to be a very important distinction.
Yeah.
So the letter C, D, and F essentially is what Dean is saying, hold off on any type of discussion. C, D, and F. So let's move on to letter.
So wait, is that the number of policies, Danny?
It's on the agenda.
No, on the agenda, on the agenda itself. JD, I have never seen you with so many papers spread out.
I know. I don't.
D, N.
F.
Are postponed.
Yes.
Right, or.
Okay, but this, I just, I would prefer that the board talked about it before you paid Dean to figure out the answer. That's what I would, but he's already working on it, we already paid him, so in this case, it doesn't matter. But in the future, I feel like there should be one more step before we pay him, because we're going to pay him big.
Well, after.
Or at least, you know, if it's less than one hours of legal research, ask him before. But if it's more than one, you know, we just bought five jerseys or ten band uniforms.
Well, I, I've gotten called out twice in this meeting, so we, we won't have this discussion in the future because Julie and I will have this discussion beforehand, and please hold me to that, okay? I'm telling you, I'm telling you in front of everybody, all right?
I just want to ask a question with that.
It was on my list.
Ring me up and, uh, go to my house, you've got to talk to me about this.
Let's not change his policy, then we spent a thousand dollars on the policy and we didn't change it. You know, that's what worries me the most. But maybe they'll say, it is fine, I like this way better, good job, Angie, money well spent. You know what I mean? It's just like a.
Well, if they didn't want to change, then why weren't they here tonight saying, hey, what's, you know?
People like, they would say, well, we get to have our say at the board meeting, is probably what they'll say.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's move.
Otherwise, do you think we should say, come to the meeting if you want to come to the policy meeting? Is that, is it going to be different than the other committee meetings?
Are they supposed to just act as committee members?
Act as committee members if, if, you know, if, if you're not on the, on the particular committee.
But they could still give feedback.
Yeah.
I bet, so if six people came and they all said, Angie, we don't like this idea, then would you say, well, don't push it to the full board?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because then the reading, it wouldn't pass anyways. So, yeah.
So letter E. Uh, we're going to move on to policy number fifty-four sixty-four, which is early graduation. And, um, I feel like what is, what's happened with this early graduation is there's been, there's some confusion with a parent that I have found out this year about a student that's a junior, wants to graduate early and, and take part in some senior activities, but also take part in junior activities. So that's, that's where this is coming from. Was there two pages to this, or is it just one? I only have one from Dean. I missed the back.
So what would you say the common understanding of this is, Julie? When you graduate early, do you graduate?
So the high school staff, and I've talked about this, when you apply for early graduation, which the board always approves semester graduates, that's pretty typical. This one is a full year in advance, and so the question became, let's take homecoming, for example. Does that student participate with the senior class or the junior class? And we decided collectively it would be the junior class because the only caveat to that schedule was early graduation, which we allowed early. Nothing else is a given that you get to do it early because you, you still have junior status.
So are you essentially getting to pick what year your final class rank is in? Like, could you, depending on how we do this or not really, if we just say?
What do you mean?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If you're in the junior class, but you graduated a year early, graduated at the same time as the seniors, so is your class rank really in the senior class?
Right, that's what we're, that's just what we're clarifying it.
Tenth or fifth, depending on which class you graduated in.
Well, and are you eligible for homecoming court as a senior during your junior year? Because it's the fall, and then would you be eligible for prom court as a junior because it's in the spring?
In sports, if you're in sports, are you?
It's kind of interesting, actually.
And then for sports, are you participate on the varsity team, or are you on the JV team?
Do you get a poster of your picture? You know what I mean? There's a lot of things that, that, um, that a student that graduates at the end of their junior year is going to miss out in their senior year. And by choosing to do that, I think we need to very specifically lay this out, so it's very clear to not only, you know, our administration, but also our principals, also our parents and our students, so that they can't come back and say.
You saw Dean's notes?
Which page is that on?
I did, yeah.
Because I feel like he wants the counselor and the, he wants that school piece to be done by the school, not by the board.
Right, no, I'm, yeah, I see where he says standards for denying approval to graduate early. I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we're laying out the criteria and that if you do decide to graduate early, you will be considered a member of the junior class. You're forfeiting everything in your senior year, all the benefits, all that, all, you know, all that kind of stuff you're forfeiting, so you can't go back and forth.
I was looking at the part, the recommended change where they have to submit something to the high school counselor and verify. That's done for every graduate, so I, I don't.
Then it shouldn't be a problem.
Right, but I don't think we should put that in this policy because you don't list all the other things they do for the graduating classes.
Well, I'm saying, like, so if you're a junior and you have advanced classes, just to make sure that the high school counselors have checked the schedule, I, classes, you know, if you want, to make sure you've had the prerequisites for those.
They would have done that prior to.
You mean prerequisites to get into the advanced class?
Yes.
Could they waive, can they waive them, though, or not really?
I think they could, yeah, if they wanted to, but then, um, you know, and if a parent is, is up in there kind of making a fuss about it, I want to be able to give them some kind of teeth to fall back on and say, well, it's in our policy, if you want to graduate early, you know, you, you can't be in.
I like what you're saying about, um, the, if it's a full year early, you maintain junior status for everything affiliated with, with the exception of graduation.
Yeah, because.
And I think that keeps it clean.
It keeps it clean, and you would take an educated guess that that student is going to fulfill their requirements by the end of their junior year to graduate.
Mm-hmm.
But they haven't done so yet, and so there is that chance that they wouldn't fulfill all those, and then, and then that could pose an issue. So, yeah, that would keep, keep it very clean and consistent and straightforward.
Is this something that's happened before? You can, you can actually get enough credits to skip your whole senior year?
Yes.
In my experience, we're, um, we have one coming.
Very ambitious.
I just think that the board needs to, I guess, help write this policy to, to make it more clear.
So what we should do then is look at the proposed policy on the first page where this, where it starts at, student's high school counselor and that bold print there, that is what's not in the policy currently. Are you following me, JD, on the first page?
The first page of Dean's or the?
Well, I'm, I'm personally looking at Dean's, but it's the same one.
It's the same copy, so, in bold, yep.
So the bold is?
Bold in caps.
The bold in caps is what is being asked to put in. Is there any, are there any changes that we want to bring to the full board? Because what I heard is Julie saying that she does like the, the student being, if it's a junior, being a junior. So we can get back there and, and look at those proposed changes that we want to bring to the board?
I'm definitely okay with the junior being a junior part, I can't.
Okay, but let's back up to the, the, the front page, let's just go through. So application for early graduation will be submitted to the, that's current policy, student's high school counselor and high school principals, current, to verify all required credits and prerequisites have been met. And then after confirmation that all requirements have been met, the student's application will be sent to the full school board for final approval, which, Julie, that's what we do currently, right?
Not their application, I think you just get their names.
We get their names, exactly.
Yep.
So, um.
I feel like, Danny, if we went under the current policy.
Yep.
Right at the very top and said in the middle paragraph, the principal may honor this request if all conditions for graduation are met and the student fulfills graduation requirements. Students graduating a full academic year early will maintain their junior status for all school-related activities except for graduation.
After requirements.
Yep, and I feel like that would cover it.
That makes sense.
I guess I'm still confused about what happens with class rank. So then you end up with the class rank of your junior, what you had at the end of your junior year?
Mm-hmm.
That person, that student would not ever have a senior year in high school. And that's what they're foregoing, is that senior year. Now, would they forego all of the benefits of that senior year? So that means they, they couldn't be on the varsity team? I mean, how, how, how deep do you want to go?
That actually isn't based on years so much as number of players and ability and that, you know.
So if you look on the second page, it goes into a little bit more detail, if you flip that one over, there's.
Is that what Danny was saying? Is that the right second page?
No, so if you go back into your policies. Keep going.
Are you at, if requesting to graduate at the end?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes. So I thought it would be nice as a board member to have a letter from, from whatever, you know, the student as to why they want to graduate early, acknowledging what they're, what they're going to miss, you know? Because I feel like sometimes parents can be pushing, and it might not be, you know, exactly what the, the student wants, but that's what the parent wants, and I just want to make sure that the student's on the same page. So that was my thought behind that.
I, I am wondering and thinking that that's likely a discussion that occurs with the.
With the counselor?
You're assuming.
I would, my feedback is if there's a student that is seeking to graduate a year early that they have put in a lot of time and effort, and I, I don't know that this step, a letter to the school board, would be necessary.
Okay.
But I'm not a committee member, I'm sharing feedback.
It wouldn't be necessary, no.
Yeah, I think all of that legwork is done because you'd have to plan your classes, your required classes out way in advance.
I think the last, the last sentence is important.
That circled part?
Well, I didn't get the second page.
This one I hear, that's what she's looking at, is what Dean circles.
Because we could use that at that part above, if the sentence works.
Do you anticipate this person ever wanting to try to play sports after they graduate?
No, not after they graduate, but as they're a junior, they, I, I could see it happening where they want to have the senior benefits. So such as, you know, a parent arguing, I want my kid to have, um, what are those called? The, the posters of the seniors?
Or just be seniors.
Yeah, the senior posters for their athletics, you know, upon the, with the rest of them, when they're really a junior.
But they're, but juniors, yeah.
Yeah, and that, yep.
And that would be covered by this language at that point.
Yep.
Because we do have juniors that play on varsity teams. In fact, I think we have sophomores that play on sophomores.
Right, I think it would be.
Yeah.
I think it would be more a junior graduating early on JV versus being pulled up. I think that would be more in question, but that would be covered under that statement because they're, they're junior status for the school year.
So they're picking that they might rather do something else instead of play their sport in their senior year, essentially?
They can still, right, yeah.
I think it's a big family decision, and, you know, one that, again, you have to carefully think out, otherwise you can't just decide, you know, midway into junior year that, I mean, it would have to really be thought out at the start.
And a lot of experiences that you have in your senior year, that's a once in a lifetime thing. You don't get to go back and do that. It's definitely not the same in college.
Yeah, no, it's definitely different. Yeah, and I was in high school, Mr. Knoll's son, what was his first name? Nick, he went to Madison his senior year, went to college, so he must have graduated in three years, went to Madison for one year, and then transferred to MIT and graduated from there. So it worked out fine for him, but I had to.
So Julie, can you say that statement one more time that we want to add in there? And this will be after requirements.
Right. A student choosing to graduate a full academic year early will for, or will maintain junior status for all school-related events except for graduation, or except graduation.
Angie, you could go to my law school, they do online now. I think you're missing your call because wanting to be a lawyer.
I did think about that, actually.
You could do it, it's a decent program.
Do you feel that fulfills the questions or concerns you had by adding that?
Adding that lot.
Adding your main sentence mostly takes care of your.
Mostly, um. I could see somebody questioning maintaining junior status. I think, I would like to see the, the verbiage added foregoing all senior-related.
We can maintain, can I read you?
I just wanted to try to be as.
You can read my writing, but. Um, maintain junior status and forego all senior-related experiences?
And activities, yeah.
Yeah.
Dean does suggest that not be in policy.
I was confused by Dean's suggestion.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Well, the re, his, I, I kind of understand what he's saying is because if we say they're foregoing all senior-related activities, like his note says, this procedure of approval is already done with the counselor, the high school principal, uh, when it's brought to the, the board for approval.
No, but it does, no, it doesn't.
I think it does, actually.
All they do is they, they check the, um, the class requirements to make sure that their credits are met, you know, how many credits they need to graduate. You know, how many credits they need to graduate and that's it. Cause we, the student that, um.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, we should.
It should be, we need to have the verbiage in there, just to be as clear as possible.
Well, we can put it in there and on the 28th, the board can.
Maintain junior status.
Maintain junior status foregoing all senior activities.
Yeah.
Except for graduation.
Except for graduation, yeah.
Yep, activities and experiences. That's it.
Well, unless they can.
Activities because, activities because experiences is pretty subjective. And activities is specific to school-related.
Subjective.
Couldn't they like come back the problem anyways as someone else's bait? Like if that's allowed, like.
It seems to provide direction to some clarifying questions.
Yep.
I think it also would help the student and family in that discussion way before this point of.
Yes. Of making that decision.
Yes, I think that's just a helpful tool all the way around, hopefully.
Okay, so are we good on what we are referring to the board on the 28th?
Definitely not after I was getting.
Right.
I'll have to go back and watch it on video again.
The, uh, yeah, right, the last two, AG 6111A.
You don't love this?
Uh, AG 6111A and AG 6111B are both similar. It's responding to RFPs and requesting a grant. So let's look at G 6111 first, 6111A, grant writing, responding to RFPs.
So I have, while you're looking at that, two thoughts. I do think, um, much like the hiring, that is my job. I feel like I know where this is coming from or what precipitated this. But even if I agreed with the board being at the ground level and approving grant applications, I don't feel our current system of meetings would allow us to meet those deadlines. I mean, that's just a logistic concern I have. The bigger concern I have is there are so many nominal, I'll call them grants, like the big ones that, um, we have board-approved, like RPIC, for example, that require board approval. So I'm not sure if this is, um, like there are little, we call them mini-grants, where teachers can apply to win classroom supplies, those kinds of things.
Like to the community health foundation, you know, so those are $500 and.
I think anything that is significant comes to the board anyway. So this makes me uncomfortable.
What do you define as significant?
Like the RPIC, which was all district, all-in. And right on the grant application, it said you need board approval.
So is it content-based for significant or dollar amount-based or is it dependent?
Could be either.
Do you ever remember us approving any other grant besides that, Danny, in our long time we've been sitting here?
Mental health grant was board-approved.
Yeah, the mental health and the RPIC. I was gonna jog Tim's memory too.
Fast-forward grants sometimes, they have grants, those kind of things.
Fast-forward, right.
Food service, um.
Yeah, they have a lot of food grants that don't come to the board.
How about anything that's controversial?
Well, define that.
That's really my guess. I mean, is that where this is coming from, Angie? And I look at you because I know you.
It's coming from me.
Based on some comments you made at another meeting, that's, you know, that's an educated guess. So I'm not, um.
You know, when, when we become, when we are part of a pilot program and in that pilot program, it specifically also calls out that you have to have board approval, because I did read it.
What are you talking about, though?
Trauma-sensitive school and that was not brought to board approval.
But it was. I just didn't take, we presented that trauma-informed classrooms a lot.
Sometime in the middle.
You approved it or you just, you saw updates? Cause it was said that it was not taken for approval.
We sat, we sat in the middle school and got the presentation and I swear we voted on it.
It was definitely before.
It was like, it was a really long time ago.
Yeah, it was four years ago.
You don't think we voted on it, though? Or you think we just watched it?
No, I, I specifically asked and was, and Heidi said that she did not bring it to the board for approval. She didn't need to.
I think we had information on it JD. I don't know that we had a vote on this, actually. I think what Heidi is, I don't think we recorded that time. I think what Heidi has said was that she brought the information and has brought updates. We've had a lot of updates. But initially, I mean, I've missed meetings along the way too, that things were voted that I don't remember because I wasn't there. But I don't recall that.
Can I just say that every legislator on the state, federal, um, level that I've talked to about those, absolutely not one of them has heard of trauma-sensitive schools. And the state of Wisconsin is the leading state on it. We have 12 school districts in the state doing this and we're sending our best practices, not only sharing it to other states, but also sharing it overseas. So what are we sharing, right? Like how, how is this happening and how is, how are we the, the leading state, the leading school districts? And our legislators don't even, have never heard of it. And they're very curious to know what is going on with that. So I just wanna, that's just a little side note.
You should convince Mary to let us count our girl score between third and fourth grade in different buildings. And we don't have to recalcory. I keep needing to send her a message and family to do it.
She came to the listening session.
Sure.
So it seems like.
Did you ever mention that to her?
I, I have talked to her about.
Sound open to that idea?
It sounds like grants that would require implementation. I'm trying to figure out my words. I'm hearing you, like, that require additional resources or changes to approaches.
That would be school-wide.
District-wide.
Yeah, I'm not looking for like, you know, teachers writing for individual, you know, $500 grants or whatever. But I'm looking for stuff that is school-wide that is.
It affects the whole district.
Yeah.
So district-wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, district-wide, yes.
So Angie, can I give you an example? We've got this ADA, um, grant that we had designed for Logan. The engineering costs came back at, let's just say, $250,000, some odd number. I have been scouring every, um, potential grant that I could apply to. And I've told our school force committee in retirement, I want to be an advocate for the school force building and figure out how we fund that to see if we can get our kids down to play.
Can you put that in the paper that, no, I'm just kidding.
In a minute.
Yeah.
To come forward, that kind of grant, come forward to the board.
What was your last statement?
Should that grant come to the board?
Yeah, would that be included in, in this?
The way the revision is stated, it would have to.
Yep.
And I'm suggesting that it shouldn't have to, but we'd love to tell you if we're awarded it.
Well, the, the issue is, is that, again, we, we answer back to taxpayers and with any type of state or federal grant, there's always ties to it. There's always strings. You always have to do this for that, you know? And so I think to be fiscally responsible, we kind of have to know what's going on, you know?
What's the financial implication if we were to get this grant? How much does this grant cost our district to implement the grant?
And whether or not the board approved that trauma thing. That's, that is what we tried to do, was bring the updates.
I think April, I think April wrote the grant. Did you ever go back inside board docs?
The minutes are so vague. I can't tell what, what happened.
Are you on RPIC or trauma?
Trauma-sensitive.
Maybe I can't remember the, which was the first one we did that I thought was more? When did we do trauma? Did we approve that one?
We're in the third year, so it must've been four years ago.
Maybe I'm thinking of trauma-sensitive schools. I guess I, I can just remember sitting there giving the presentation and they had all these videos and the whole administrative team was there and, but I might be thinking of RIPC not.
Another example that required board approval was the van that's parked out front. So I mean, if it states on there that.
But that was already applied for by the time it came to the board, I believe, didn't it?
I mean, I'm sure she worked up the application, but we almost didn't get approval.
Okay.
So, again, I just, the vetting, especially with Katie's background, we have to be very careful not to abuse that specialty skillset of hers. But she knows about, um, vetting grants and if they affect, yeah, the budget, you can bet she'll be in on those and I'm asking for trust now.
It's not, it's not for Katie.
Uh, right, I know, but I'm asking, I think, whatever happened years ago. Now, this is an, um, an attempt maybe to not have it happen again, but I think this is too confining. I'd rather try the open dialogue. Like you don't have any opposition to the mental health grant, do you?
Yes, uh, I, that was not fully vetted and I don't think that we were presented in a manner that we saw both sides.
We fully vetted it.
Right, but then, so we got the information that was kind of like a high, you know, happy, happy, joy, joy, you know, side of it. And, but there was really no details in it and therefore we voted yes, because we didn't have the full information. Cause I would've voted no.
I can't remember when we did that.
Uh, which one?
Mental health. You're saying that was three years ago?
No.
Or do we have three grants now we're talking about?
We, I don't know how many, but it's a lot.
Yeah.
Because so many of them.
So like seven mindsets, for example.
I think Tim listened all the, in, in a finance committee meeting, all the grants that we have. Was it last month or October, two months ago? Yeah.
Even like Title I grant, you're not suggesting.
I take issue with CISA and Title.
But Title.
Sorry, because they have no metrics. They provide nothing to us.
Oh, but that is so not true.
Well, but we're not provided that.
But that's a different statement than saying they don't have any metrics. We meet with CISA all the time.
How would I know if it's not provided that?
Because you don't need that information, in my opinion. That's our job.
But do you want me to approve contracts every year that keep going up in cost?
And everything goes up in cost.
Well, right, but I don't see what we're getting for it, except for a higher bill next year and what have they done? Far as I know, Jack's what.
So each line item, you get that CISA contract, for example. Each line item, you'll see what it is for. We'd be happy to answer questions, but ultimately, um, let's say Amy, she's going to have to decide, because she's our Title I contact, is she getting the support she needs from Casey, for example, at CISA nine? And if not, we've already said we're not paying for that. Take us off that line item. But those are the decisions we wrestle with and by the time it comes to you, we've been through that process and it should be at our level, not yours.
Well, okay, so what you're doing is bringing it to us to blindly approve, I feel like. Cause I don't see any of the metrics. I don't see any of, any of the outcomes that have come out of any of these programs. Is it helping or are we just throwing money at money?
But I just can't imagine that you would want to be saddled with all of that information.
Well, it, it could be, you know, printed off and, and given to us. You know, this program through, I don't know, CISA whatever, you know, impacted this many kids and the outcome had, you know, was reading, reading scores improved by this much. That's what I want to see.
Well, so do I, but you can't, um, that won't happen, for example, because you can't attribute an increased reading score to one metric.
Cause you can only change one.
Yeah.
I'm just giving an example of. Yeah.
So my vote, even though I don't get one, would be to let us do our jobs and, um, moving forward, have, I mean, when there's an example of what you feel you don't have enough information on, to let us know.
I have.
I don't have my materials with me. I apologize.
It's always after the backdoor.
That's because I only get the information that night.
In reviewing trauma-sensitive schools specifically, going back to when Governor Evers was then state superintendent and following the links on our district website and going back and back and back. It seems as though, and I was looking, I think it's our school conditions goals. Those goals directly reflect a trauma-sensitive school approach. So that's where I would, that's where I'm, I'm piecing together, maybe connecting dots and I'm way off. But that's where I'm wondering where then our, our grants that we have, our, our goals and our focus directed by a grant. Cause I think that was the one that talked about feeling a sense of your school community and there's one more and it was almost verbatim, our goals currently were in that 2016, I think, document from, at that time, state superintendent Evers. And so is it directing our academic goals based off of a grant? I, that's what I'm.
You say you don't like that, but you're okay with them directing our academic goals at their state standards?
I didn't say what I liked or disliked. I'm saying in relation to how does the grant play out for the district? What are the implications of the grant? And I'm trying to lay out in my mind, what's a way to increase the communication, to increase understanding and awareness, speaking to what Angie's asking for, but also speaking to like, that could end up being a lot of grants. And how do we narrow down the metrics of what should be brought to the board, right?
Any grant from DPI or a grant for more than a thousand dollars?
Well, that's what I was wondering. That's why I said significant earlier, because I was like, oh, I can anticipate this could get an interesting conversation because.
Well, you go back to Tim with the $250,000 grant for the ramp out of Logan. Absolutely. I, I mean, where is the, what's significant is, to me, is not significant to you.
Well, you can put a dollar amount on, but Tim makes a good point, because if there's 10 grants total, that would equal 250, then you may have some grants coming to the board if you put a dollar amount on it, but not all of them.
But not all of them.
And that would be another transparency, communication thing that could be argued at, you know, at some point. Because you, well, you approved it, but we didn't, but we, you know what I mean? So it's, I'm just wondering, is there, how could we narrow down the discussion to identify what those factors might be to bring to the board or not bring to the board? Maybe the board doesn't need it. I don't know, but.
So Julie, maybe we should clarify, like when you think of, you know, we call them the title grants or IDEA grant. You know, those, our allocation is based on census data. So the census data, so they're, they're really a non-competitive grant. But the procedures to get them, we have to, um, ESEA, and Julie, you know what the acronym stands for. Amy's got to update our, um, our ESEA plan. And once that gets approved by DPI, then we're eligible for our allocation. And then she submits a budget and so forth and so on. And that's true for Title I, Title II, Title IV. We relinquish Title III. It also includes IDEA funding. So those are, those are non-competitive grants based on applications to DPI for our educational plan for all students.
And I am really hoping that's not what you mean when you.
I'm hoping that too, because that just sounded very. I'm hoping that too, because that just sounded very confusing to me.
I mean, that would, that red tape alone, we.
It really did, Angie. I mean, what Tim just mentioned, that was just kind of overwhelming.
And that's the kind, you know, but that is the work we do. I think.
I just want to make sure that we are going in the right direction with the school district and that we are not being guided by grant requirements or grant ideology. In our goals, in our direction, in our strategic planning. We need to be following what our community wants now, which sometimes it matches up with state and federal, you know, ideas and sometimes it doesn't. And I think it's very important to make sure that we do listen to our community.
There's probably a decent some percentage of people who agree with you. I don't know what percentage that is, but I'm sure there's plenty.
Okay, so then. For me, I'll go back to what is the cost to implement the grant? That's really important to me as a board member, because you might get 30,000. But if it takes 200,000 to implement, well, is that a good, you know, like, is that, is that a good use of that grant?
My guess is that would, what you're describing would require board approval. Seems that we're stuck on. Like whatever it was that happened with trauma sensitive and that.
It was already on my radar before that, but that kind of.
But that's an example.
Was the nail in the coffin, so to speak.
So I'm wondering if it's more appropriate when there is a concern of an approach or a tool being utilized. Through a grant or because as a result of a grant, if maybe that goes on a committee agenda. If there's something specific to trauma sensitive schools is implementing this and that's why we're using it and it goes to a committee. And to discuss, bring to the board, maybe that tool or strategy or approach doesn't, maybe it's not a requirement specific to that grant. Where we, the district could decide, we're, we're no longer going to use approach A anymore, because the board decided, but we're going to continue with this grant. I'm trying to figure out like a middle ground, if there could be, or, or.
And therefore that grant to go to that committee, that's something that affects district wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, here, okay, so let's use the trauma sensitive, right, so it's a pilot program. Um, I don't know how many years it's running. Um, do you remember?
I don't, I don't either.
I know we're, we're in our third year of it and I, like, if they decide to extend this into, you know, continue the funding for it. I want to make sure that this board is able to vote on it before we apply again, or, you know, for another round. So, and I think we need to be able to fully vet it, you know, not just have the highlights of it. So, you know, and have a spin put on it of how great and wonderful it's going to be. No, I want to know the ins and outs, what it really means.
And I think what Jill just suggested, that the grants go through the proper committee level, uh, that would vet those grants.
Well, that's what this, this said.
Isn't that what I hear, I'm hearing you say?
No.
Oh.
But it sounded good. No, I was saying specific approaches, like, do you have an example? I'll use an example of one that has been brought to my attention and I don't know if it's tied to trauma informed or not, or sensitive schools or whatever, uh, but the ACE score survey. So there's been feedback and concerns about it, it being a very intrusive.
The Y R B S?
No, the ACE, questionnaire.
Do we do ACE scores?
It would only be through Y R B S.
It's Y R B S.
The Youth Risk Behavior Assessment, that's a statewide.
Cause, well, Trandy has said that she's seen that.
And it might be within that, it's a, I mean, it's a, I'm familiar with it, with survey, but my point is.
Yeah, it is, it is those questions about everything and, um, but parents always have the option to opt out.
How do they opt out? Because I didn't even know they were.
So, Tim, Tim, going back to that, let's just, so if, if the ACE survey is something that is brought.
It's part of Y R B S.
In a, in a concern, that could be brought then to a committee and then is it needed, is it, what's the record, why, why are we doing it? Okay, it's, it's part of a grant, it's not a requirement of the grant, it's, you know, best practice of it, whatever. Is it something then that the board can choose to, or take to the full board to vote on and say, we don't want to utilize that tool, but we'll continue with that grant? If that's making sense, like a port, a part of the.
That was not part of a grant and it is a statewide assessment.
And I don't know, I just, that's one that recently has been brought to.
Is it required?
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
Yeah. Cause I.
I mean, I don't know.
I think it's.
Why you wouldn't give it, especially when there's an opt-out. That's where we get our data from.
I don't know, as a parent, I don't know how I would opt out of that.
It happens all the time, Heather told me, they have quite a few at the middle school.
Yeah, I.
I know for the high school, the students just did not take it, they didn't want to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the thing.
What's a called Y?
Y R B S.
Behavior survey.
There's some that are like voluntary, but.
Like, Landline County uses it.
Right, one, I think there's validity to concerns of certain tools, the ACE score specifically. Is used in mental health. So is it appropriate for a school district, a public school district, to be including an ACE score within a bigger survey, maybe, you know? And I guess I.
Well, and here's the other thing, is that kids are taking it in the computers and they're sitting right next to each other, so they see, oh, my parents are divorced, oh, my parents, you know, yell at me. You know, this, that and the other thing, because those are two questions that are on there.
So this, uh, Wisconsin Youth Behavior Risk Route Survey is conducted as part of a national effort by U S Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, da-da-da-da. What it covers, the Department of Public Instruction, D P I, has administered the Y R B S every two years beginning in 1993.
So it's not required?
Oh, I don't know what that, surveys are designed to protect the privacy of students, local parent permission procedures was followed before administration. Including informing parents that their child's participation was voluntary.
Okay, so, and I will double check, because I would not be okay with taking this ACE survey either. I'm confident we've never done that, but those factors, what ACE means are part of the Y R B S.
Traffic safety, weapons and violence, suicide, tobacco use.
But that's all confidential, so we don't, you know, we wouldn't know anyway. But anyway, we can talk.
Well, and I'm not saying that ACE score survey, ACE survey is being utilized, I'm saying that, that was one that was more recently asked. Um, so I was using that.
But why, you think it's traumatic for people to take the assessment? That's why you don't like it?
I think it.
So the.
Let me rephrase. It can be an intrusive assessment in what, how does it connect? Or what is that data going to do for the school? Like, does the school need that information about students to educate them? And that argument can go both ways and there's a lot of, probably a lot of valid points one way or another. What I have heard is concern of the level of intrusiveness and how that data is being used.
So.
And what does that do with education?
Yes, as it relates to public education.
Exactly.
But so this says anonymous voluntary participation and it's basically the government trying to stop kids from committing suicide. Morbid, morbidity.
I mean, and we have used, like, I know for a fact, our, um. Climate goal that you referenced earlier about, um, feeling connected to your school, that's a huge indicator that helps. School academic performance, attendance, you know, it's related to those factors. And there are suicide studies that talk about if you don't have that connection, you know, it's a greater risk than if you do. So those are the kinds of things that we discuss, but I know we're still off topic.
So are you, Angie, you're saying you wish more parents would opt out, or they?
I don't think we should be doing it at all. So here, I just, I pulled it up. This is the.
Can I circle back to the discussion?
But that's your ACE score. That is not.
That's the questions that they're asking.
Yes.
But that specifically says finding your ACE score, right? That's not this Y R B thing. This is your ACE score.
Yes, this is on the, the trauma sensitive schools PowerPoint that is on our school district website.
And so who are we expecting to look at that? Parents?
It's under the student tab and then it's under forms and materials for parents.
Okay, so let's come back to the, uh, Administrative Guidelines 6111A grant writing. What are, uh, what are we going to do with this? Are we going to take any of the verbiage, change any of verbiage, move this to the board on the 28th? Or are we going to ask for more information going forward for grants that are presented to the school?
So this does say all grant, R F P must, R F Ps must go to appropriate committee. I have to, we need to add appropriate, um, first to be vetted, so.
That goes back to. Right now, all is saying every grant, so that's still.
That would, that would include the material grants that the teachers apply for individually for their lone classroom.
So could it be like? Grants that are applied? Cause I'm assuming the administration team is the one that applies for. All the other grants other than the ones that are specific for the classroom.
Not necessarily, like C T E has a lot of them through the high school.
Okay.
Like Mike Prezic will apply for, or.
Okay.
I mean, I sign, certainly, but.
Okay.
Somehow we need the effect of politically charged grants or ones that don't agree with the law, takes over the board, but then how do they?
You can't do that. Uh, you, you can't have politically charged, because then that's a matter of an opinion.
Yep.
Uh, and that would not be good.
I think.
But don't you feel that's where we're going? I mean, I know Angie doesn't agree, like, with trauma sensitive and that's one of the catalysts that brings this here.
Cause she's trying to avoid it in the future, so we're trying to figure out how we do that.
Because if, yeah, if it weren't.
Right.
If it met with your beliefs, we wouldn't, this would be on the agenda.
I would still want to know that the string is attached. There's always strings attached.
Right, and we have to vet those.
So I think maybe where, where we're headed to tonight, Angie, is rather than saying the grants must go to committee to be vetted first. Is we're, we're asking for the grants that affect district wide, not classes or groups of people in the district. We're asking for information that's district wide to be brought to the board. Not just a high level of information, but all of the details of that grant that's going to affect district wide.
Yes.
Not a classroom, not the C T E, not Noboken, but if it's going to affect district wide. Now, how can we say that verbiage in this policy?
And you want information on those, or you want to approve before they're even applied for?
Well, that's, that's something that we need to discuss too, because I think that's where we are. We want the information that's going to come out and affect the district. Not just one class or one group of people in the district. Uh, and then having that information, then we, then we take that information and say, yes, go ye and apply for this.
No, then you send it to the full board. The, the appropriate committee would say, yes, it's to the full board.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm hearing you of.
Deadlines.
Well, I would say, what if you just apply and then the board says no, if they really don't like it afterwards?
Because I think that's what happened with the van, going back and rethinking this, didn't Heidi already apply for that?
That's what Angie said.
And then wasn't it, you know, upon approval of the board, we would accept this? Is what it came down to. I might be off base there.
I can't even remember that.
We did.
We voted, okay.
The same with the R P I C grant. That's another one, I mean, it was approved in the past, but then this board, um, unproved it.
Wait, so you don't like the, you don't like just let, why can't we just stop the grant, so they meet their deadline? That solves that, they.
Well, if there's a heavy deadline, I mean, we could always, they could always send us the information and we could do a roll call for, via email, voting. So like, you know, in those instances. Um, but I mean, it takes such a long process to apply for a grant.
That would need to be public.
Yeah, yeah.
I would do it by email.
Okay.
I, why don't you like the idea of just letting them apply and then meeting way after? You could just say withdraw that grant.
Withdraw the grant.
It's not like the state's very fast.
Yeah.
You know, because you're gonna, you're gonna be fine with.
Cause then we look really like.
Who cares? We're already looking funny.
So.
You know, I mean, cause at that point, who are we looking for? If only the D P I or whoever we applied to the grant to, we only look silly to them, but now we're saying we don't like their grant.
And it takes a ton of work to apply for a grant. I mean, it really, really does and a lot of time and effort is put into that, so. I would like to, you know, if we're not going to move forward with it, then we should say no in the beginning before all this time and effort is spent on it.
I think we, an idea would be to bring those that require either board approval or the president's signature. Because I, you know, if, we wouldn't ask you to sign.
Because that would be district wide, affecting the entire district.
So then you would say, well, you know.
Yeah, let's bring this.
I have to find out what the board, um, feels first. And then when I am asked to sign something, that is my cue before I do to share the information with you. And see how you feel that is working before we revise the policy would be my suggestion.
What I'm gathering is increased communication, so it's not necessarily the, the grant, you know, a matter of an opinion of this is a good grant or not. But. Trauma, trauma informed schools or trauma sensitive schools, trauma is, it plays a big impact on academic achievement. And I think probably the bigger concern would be how is that information being utilized and how is it tied in education? So not necessarily that it's bad to participate in this, but more so. Trauma is a sensitive topic and, you know, maybe just more of a discussion is, is what I'm wondering.
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to merge this because.
We want to make sure we're remaining.
When I think about that, I think of just awareness for teachers. That's my greatest takeaway is, um, an understanding that there's so much more to a child than whether or not they know their math facts, you know? So I think it's just helped teachers, um, they're better equipped to welcome all the kids in class and help them be.
Well.
As primed as they can for learning.
I'm a firm believer that, based off these questions, like, literally everybody is going to be able to be labeled tra, trauma, that, you know, they've had some trauma in their life. Um, and while I understand, you know, yes, from the teacher's perspective, you know, knowing that, you know, what has happened in that child's life can help, but then also.
But that's not even it, because they don't always know, they shouldn't know.
Right, but then also the other part of that is, is a teacher that has 25 kids, 18 kids, whatever. You, they're all going to have different, you know, things that are going on in their lives that's making them have a bad day or good day. They can't adjust their teaching to all those kids every class hour. That is an unreasonable request to our teachers. They have so much going on, they, they can't change how they, you know, how they teach to this, you know, this child, to this child, to this child. That's just un, that's.
Who was that guy from Wausau? Dr. Hannahcheck or something?
Hartwig, Eric Hartwig.
Hartwig.
Are we still doing that?
Yep, he's coming on the, I think he's coming on the 17th.
It's sort of like.
Professional development.
What is it? It's like the teacher, it's like a resource for the teachers to help with.
Best.
Discipline or something?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
The first time we ever heard about this, I thought, oh, this is like ACE scores. And Heidi was like, this is not like ACE scores, this is.
Well, she swears we're not using ACE scores.
Something else.
Yeah.
But that was.
Well, Angie.
But it is on the webpage, right? You just pull it up, so somehow you manage.
Teaching you what they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're asking these kids these questions.
That's just so that we know some of our kids do have, parents in jail or separated and.
I, I think we need to focus on academics, not being counselors.
But my point is, and I, I, it affects academics more than we will ever know.
Oh, yeah, I told, I agree, and it affects how they grow up and how they. Oh, yeah, I to, I agree. And it affects how they grow up and how they, you know, their personal relationships. I totally agree with that. But I also agree that as a school district, it is our job to teach students. If they need those resources, we should be able to provide, provide those resources outside of school and focus on the academics. And I know you're going to disagree with that.
I think it's interesting that we do a pretty intensive survey, but it's anonymous, which is good. But yet at the same time, though, what's the point of doing the survey? Because if we can't tie those results to specific students to help understand what their needs are, then, you know, it seems slightly, it seems questionable why to do it.
It's not just for us. I think the state and nation, you know.
The state, the center sort of disease.
Correct.
Sixty percent of, you know, juniors in high, public high schools have tried alcohol in the last month or whatever. Those are the statistics then that lead to whatever program.
Right.
So I think that goes back to the communication about, like, my child's coming home and talking about this survey. That seems very intensive and intrusive and why and how are the, how are their scores being tied to them or not? The communication component, I a hundred percent stand behind mental health impacts academic achievement. It still goes back to the way in which the public school system or Anigo School District is utilizing that because my concern and concerns expressed by others is ensuring that we don't get in a great area where we are focused more on mental health needs as opposed to academic needs. Do they tie in and had a hundred and ten percent? So what is that balance, I think?
And.
So Julie, on, how often does Cola, the, the Cola group meet, your central office people?
Once a week.
Once a week. So.
Central Office Leadership Team. I took the E off.
So when your Cola team meets, they meet Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, so Tuesday morning, you have all of your district-wide administrators that are sitting in front of you.
Just central office, yeah.
Well, that's district-wide administrators, because Heather's not a district-wide administrator, for example. So you got all of your district-wide administrators. If, if Amy is going to be searching out and applying for a grant next week, could you possibly, in your weekly memo that you send out to all the board members, at that weekly memo, communicate to all the board members, this week in our Cola meeting, it was brought up that Amy's going to search out X, Y, Z grant, that Heidi's going to search out X, Y, Z grant. And the board members at that point can also search those same grants because they're going to be looking at some of the same areas. So that could help communicate to all the board members at the very beginning stage of what is going on grant writing. Same way with the survey. So Heidi, because you don't allow somebody to give a survey just because they want to give it, right? Don't you approve? I know, I don't, wait a minute, I don't want to put you in a box.
Passively, you know, I know about the YRBS. In fact, we had an open records request and there were dozens and dozens and dozens of surveys that we get that I don't approve because it's required by every teacher for their evaluation to survey the kids, you know, those kinds of things.
But I think you could follow where I'm thinking, that some of this communication to the board from your week, weekend review. So, so I know you do a great job giving us what all the administrators and all the school, schools are doing in each respective school, but maybe at the bottom or the top or somewhere, this is what's going on in my office. Uh, I'm, I'm overseeing X, Y, Z. Uh, this grant is coming up. Uh, this survey's coming up. Uh, take a look at it. If you have any questions, come talk to me about this. This is what I'm doing this week or this is what I'm going to be doing next week. And I think that will help answer some questions and give the communication going forward as to what's going on with grants. I don't know, I'm just trying to, trying to help this process along.
And that is aligned with what I was suggesting to try.
Could you guys talk about YRBS at a different meeting? Hold on. Is it People Services or something?
We talked a lot about it during, um, when we were in the RPIC grant and.
Yeah, it wasn't in the committee.
I was just curious. I, oh, I just remembered, yeah, I didn't know what they were talking about then.
Yeah.
But so I just, it's only done every two years. I guess I'm curious how many years we've been participating, you know, so if, you know, if we've been participating.
As long as I've been here, so that's fine.
If we've been participating for thirty years, you know, I don't see why.
So what are, what are Angie, you and JD's feeling, because Jill's here as a, as a person? What is, what are your feelings rather than, which has great comments, sorry, I don't mean to.
Keep going, no.
But what are, what are your feelings with the, the grant writing, responding to RP, RFPs, as well as requesting a grant that Julie and her weekly Cola meetings? She doesn't have to give us the nitty-gritty details of what's going on in her Cola meetings, because I don't want to know. But if there's something that's going to affect the district, district-wide for grants or a survey, uh, that's coming out. So that way, we're not getting phone calls from parents that are saying, hey, do you know that my kid just got this survey and it's very intrusive? We've already, we've already heard about it from Julie, because she's going to let us know the week ahead of time in her week in review memo that comes out and let us know, and then we'll see it. And if she's got the survey, she could even possibly send us the survey so we can look at it and, and know what's going on. What are your?
That sounds reasonable to me. I, I just wonder how many parents missed the form, you know, that gave them the chance to opt out. Cause I know I fail to open my kids' backpack sometimes, so.
I never remember seeing anything.
I only thought about that because when I go back to when I first came on the board with Brian Misfeldt, the, the first week with Brian, he sent out this, this memo to all the board members of everything that he did. I, I mean, some of it, I thought, well, maybe there's, you're just telling us a little bit too much. Uh, so there's a, there's a fine line there. But, uh, maybe that would help with some of the communication. It's certainly not going to hurt it. Yeah, provide links to where they're, uh, where they're searching and things. What are your, what are your thoughts on that?
I, that's really what I was trying to say, is those that require board approval, obviously we stay with that.
Yeah.
And then others, I will try to do a better job of getting you that information.
Does that require a policy change?
No, it does not. No.
If it doesn't work, then, then we would revisit this.
I think the mental health navigating position is grant-funded, I believe, like, there's, I think they're a very important positions that are tied to mental health that my opinion and feedback might be different than yours. And I'm sensing like people want to just make sure we're not.
Because like Angie said, we don't.
We're not using an umbrella under a certain category by my general opinion where we can gather the information and, and better understand if there's a concern, you know, so that way we are not, not moving forward with grants that impact and support students that have mental health needs. We just have clear communication of what is included within that grant, so that way we still are appropriately meeting needs, including mental health and, and maintaining those parameters from academic to mental health.
See, because that's one of the things they're trying to do, right? Improve mental health to improve academics. And like, that's starting to be the kick lately, because it's hard to improve academics, so now we're trying new things.
Right, and that's where districts.
Right, not just us, the whole country.
District, yes, you know, that fine line of what is mental health and what is public education.
And since we're with the government, they're trying to help everybody do better. And if that's, would you say, do you say that's not the government's role? I don't know.
The government's role is to help people get better?
Yeah, do you think so?
I think that you guys did a great job including this agenda item where you will, we can review, correct?
Yeah.
I'm just this person sitting at the table.
Because I don't, I, I don't want to, to, like Angie said, it takes hours to go through and write some grants. I've, I've done some grant writing and it's, it's a lot of countless time. And then what do we do to Amy that's gone through and, and spent the countless hours writing a grant? Then all of a sudden, like JD says, it comes to the board and the board says, no, we've wasted all the district resources. But if you can tell us all this upfront in those weekend reviews, I think it would save us.
And it was a fear of mine, actually, Danny, when I looked at the proposed changes, who's going to want to put that time and effort in? You know, I was fearful that it would dissuade people from applying, but.
So we know what we're sending forward from this committee for this time. Mary Kay's, Mary Kay's got it.
It's only the early graduation and then the.
The three.
And the, the thirty-one thirty, thirty-one twenty and fifty-four sixty-four.